A work session for employees.
Go move, Chairman.
I want to thank everybody for coming today. We want to have this work session to go where we had some events happen that we just want to make sure that the employees of this county know that we're behind them 100% and make sure that we do the right thing. But I just wanted to, Daylon asked for a work session and he's not able to be here, but we got him on the phone. Mr. Edsner, you want to start? Throwing you on the bus right now, Anna.
I can, if you want me to. I think the issue, the concern from some in the Water Department was that we had those issues that occurred over the Christmas holiday. Holidays don't count as hours worked under FLSA, under our policy. And so, the time that they worked, so they received their holiday pay just like everybody else, and then they were paid for the time they came in. I think their concern was that it was a straight time and it wasn't at time and a half or some other rate. And so, I think that was sort of the issue that the Board wanted to discuss.
Any commissioners want to make a comment? I know there's certain things we can and can't do, we want to make sure we do it right and show support for our employee.
Well, I'll say, Chairman, I don't know if Daylon wanted to say anything. I will say it's not so much about holiday pay. To me, as it is, an emergency situation or doing what's right by the employees, because I understand holiday pay, I understand that people are on call, people are going to get called out at inopportune times and all that. But the situation that happened over Christmas happened to be on a weekend, happened to be on a holiday, and happened to be a situation that without people involved that worked for this county, people wouldn't have water. And we've got to have water. It's not an option not to have water for the residents. So, I don't know how many people were on call, and I know you and I talked about this. To me, it wasn't a call from the Water Department or anybody else. We talked about the folks that were not at home on Christmas doing something that we felt was right for them not being around their family during Christmas, not being a scheduled day for them to work, or, you know, something like that. And I mean, I get the on-call part. So, for me, I don't know if it's a, if we need to rewrite policy or change policy, but do maybe something like we've done in the past, recognize those employees that went above and beyond, because I consider Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, that weekend, a little more than an on-call answering a service call for a downed tree or a broken water line or something like that. I just, I think it's something different, so I think we look at it as a one-all for an emergency situation. And we call it whatever we want. I just think what we talked about was making sure that the employees that go above and beyond in a crisis situation, that we got to have them, that we let them know we appreciate it, and that we compensate them for going above and beyond like that.
I couldn't say it better than what Sam had just said. And the reality for me, the Water Department, you know, is a little different than any other department, like Public Works, Parks and Markets, and so on. And with exception of the fact that they have their own funding source, which I think we need to look at how not only they can be compensated for those particular situations, but in the other situation we have coming up with certifications, I think they ought to be treated differently with regard to that. And again, I want to reiterate everything that Sam said, specifically to the Water Department, emergency situation, and that holiday, we had the trifecta of things happening that we ought to address. And if we have to look at the entire policy, I want to do that at a later date, but right now, I definitely want to address those employees that were affected.
I don't want to, you know, I just don't want to narrow out one department, because we've got a lot of departments in this county that's very important to us, and it just happens to be this one department that took the blow of the bad weather. And I saw them out there, and I was out there with them with my own properties, and I, you know, I can feel for them. Ms. Wood?
I'd like to echo what Sam and Chris have both said, because we got lucky and it wasn't an ice storm, because if it had have been, we'd have had all hands on deck with Public Works keeping the roads open, so power could be restored and things such as that. You know, at the end of the day, I want our employees to be taken care of, and we do appreciate them, because this county does not function or happen without them.
Do we have anybody else that did, we have people, I thought we had people from maintenance too, that, yeah. So, yeah, I didn't look at it as, I know the Water Department, because that was what was in the news. So, I knew it was the Water Department was working on getting water to all parts of the county and some parts that you can't get to. So, I didn't know if we had maintenance staff that were working on our buildings, facilities that had water issues, or if we had Public Works folks or anybody else that was working because it was an emergency, not just on-call holiday pay type thing.
I know for sure we had at least one, maybe more, in building maintenance that ran a number of calls related to the cold weather. I'd have to check to see exactly how many. And I don't know if Public Works had anybody. I don't think we had anybody else. Any thoughts? Finance, you got any thoughts how we can do it and do it? Come on, come on forward.
Well?
We want to do it right.
Well?
Press the button.
Well, as they say in the old Baptist church, "I'm not going to be before you very long. I don't feel well, but I can. I have shingles, but I've been here every day." But this is the second time we have addressed this situation. We addressed it once before at Civic Center. Where an employee came before the Board and stated that they felt that they were not getting paid fairly. We've been through this. It makes no sense to me. No disrespect to you, Chairman, no disrespect to you Commissioners, no disrespect to you County Administrator, nor HR. But it just appalls me that an accusation can be made stating that we're not paying our employees correctly, or they felt that they didn't get paid the way they should in an open meeting. Because once you stated that in an open meeting, that not only reflected me, but it reflected my department. And I got a problem with that. We go above and beyond to make sure that every employee's time is accurate and correct, whether they're a department head or not, putting in incorrect time or not. We go one by one on those departments. We make sure they're getting regular time, overtime, holiday pay, or what. We call the department heads to make sure and to let them know, "You've made an error. Please correct." We go above and beyond. So, no, we would not shortchange anybody, nor have we shortchanged anybody. So, I'm very disturbed about all of this being brought up once again. When I took on the role as Finance Director, I assumed the responsibilities, knowing that I would have to work above and beyond, no matter what it took to get the job done, no matter how many hours it took, I had to do the job, and I've been doing that to the best of my ability. Whether I got to work one hour, two hours, or as some would say, they work 76 hours in a day, and they know we ain't got but 24, I do it. My department does it. Am I a salary employee? Yes, I am. So, I realize that whatever I do to get the job done, no matter how many hours, that's what I'm supposed to do. I see you stated about the Water Department at Christmas time. Well, let me bring some to your attention. One day when it was freezing, or we had an ice storm or whatever, nobody came to work. It was payroll that day. Two people came to work for my department to make sure every county employee got paid in building maintenance, and this man over here. Nobody else came, but we was making sure that every county employee got a paycheck. It wasn't Christmas, nor was it Thanksgiving, nor was it Valentine's, but it was a payday. But we came here, my two people came here. That man right there, out of his own pocket, took his credit card and bought us pizza for lunch, so we could eat. But we made sure that every county employee got their check. It wasn't Christmas, but it was a critical situation, because it was an ice storm. So, everybody else was at home, but we made sure you got a paycheck. So, when you pick and choose, yeah, that bothers me, and that disturbs me as well. I know Christmas is special, because it's special to me. Any day is special, as long as I'm above ground. That's a special day to me. So, it really bothers me that now we picking and choosing what we going to do, because at a critical time, it's been critical for John Lo. There's certain times when we have a storm. It's been critical for my department. It's been critical for a lot of departments within the county, but you want to pick and choose, and then an employee has the nerve and the audacity to call a Commissioner or Commissioners instead of following the chain of command and go to your supervisor. If you got a problem with your paycheck, go to your supervisor, have them to reach out to the Finance Department, HR Department, and the County Administrator's Office. Do not call a Commissioner when you supposed to follow the chain of command. That's how I was taught. Maybe somebody was taught different, but I was taught you follow the chain of command. If that person does not seem to get the job done, then you go further. But to call a Commissioner or Commissioners makes no sense to me when you don't honestly know the facts and to assume that they were not paid properly. FSLA says a vacation and holidays is not considered a workday. I don't care how you look at it, where you look at it, if it's in Putnam County, Jasper County, Bucks County, Houston County, I don't care, in the public sector, it is not. Private can do what they want to do. But when you work in a public sector, holiday, vacation is not considered workdays. You got to work actually 40 hours before you get time and a half. We did not shortchange anybody from getting a holiday pay, nor their straight time pay for the hours that they worked. So, don't assume on our part that something was wrong. Don't do that. We go above and beyond to do what we can for this county, and I don't even live over here. I have slept in this building a million nights. So, when you pick and choose, don't pick and choose, do for all. If you going to do for one, you do for all. You don't pick and choose a department, you don't pick and choose a department head, and you don't pick and choose. When you do for one, you do for everybody. And it honestly states in your comp time policy, it says, "Salary personnel shall anticipate that there will be times when duties will require more than 40 hours to complete. This has been accounted for in your salary calculation, and they will, and they will not be eligible for any additional compensation." That came from the Board. You voted on this. But now, in different situations, you want to choose and pick what you want to do. I got a sister-in-law right now at the Medical Center having a heart attack, but I'm here with you. I got shingles, but I'm here with you. We got all that going on. They came in yesterday, and if I got to stay here all week long, all weekend long, that's what I'm going to do, but guess what's on my paycheck? Eighty. Eighty. What's on Shannon's paycheck? Eighty. That young lady works Saturday and Sunday, because she called me. But her checks say eighty. It just appalls me that this goes on and on and on, because an individual or a department can call one Commissioner, two Commissioners, three Commissioners, and then this becomes an issue all over again. And it's sad. I don't have a vote, but I got to say.
Levita, I mean, we're here to do what's right and make sure we're doing what's right, and that's why, you know, we want to hear.
You guys once put the policy and procedures in place. You put in that, on the comp thing, because of salary employees, you took away our compensation, our comp time. You took that away, but you say it, that if I go to the doctor and I worked one hour, I'm going to get paid for eight, or I'm going to get paid for 10. That was because y'all took the compensation away from salary employees, and we thank you. We thank y'all for everything that you do. Now, one time do I call or say something to Mr. Sam, Mr. John, the Chairman, I call him all the time, and he probably sick of me, but I worry the daylights out of that man. I do. Can you come sign the check? Can you do this? Can you do that? But not to complain, or not to raise issues, but it just appalls me and disturbs me that an accusation could be made without getting the facts from who handles that department in an open meeting.
Hello? Daylon, go ahead, you want to go?
Yeah. Levita, until today, I didn't know anything about what you said, about any accusation or anything. And you know me just as well as, I guess, the rest of the guys and ladies up there. I don't do a whole bunch of one-offs or playing favorites or you pick 'em's. What I do is what is best for the county and its employees. So, I just want to clarify that, that for me, I'm indifferent to some of the challenges that an individual employee might have, as I am concerned about the well-being of all employees. It just so happens, this particular time, it affects the Water Department, and it's a critical resource. So, I don't want to take issue with that or take offense to that as much as I am concerned about implementing a policy that takes care of these situations. As we make the policies better, we will close loopholes and pockets where there are gaps and challenges, so this doesn't happen. As far as the accusation goes, I agree with you wholeheartedly, there's a chain of command. I'm not going to shoot the messenger, because I don't know who it was and how it got to us, even with just hearing it tonight by you. There's a way that departments work, but I think employees needed to be educated on the policy, and what I heard was a lack of understanding of the policy and how we get compensated. And oftentimes, it comes to something like this situation where somebody feels cheated because they don't understand. And I'm hopeful that whomever it was, the department head has been clarified with the information to correctly educate his or her employee on the process, so that that is no longer an issue, because we do believe in what you guys do and the work that you put in, especially as a department, but probably the smallest few that accounts for the benefits of all. With that being said, Chairman, you know, and Board, I'm more interested in how we fix a policy to address those critical needed times during a holiday or off time, because outside of salaried employees, and Levita, you mentioned mostly salaried employees, we don't really have a policy for non-salaried employees that will address this situation. Now, that's my opinion, and even though we voted on some things, and Levita, you know, and I got to clarify this thing, we didn't take away a compensation plan or the workers' comp. What we did was allow you all to make that decision to institute a market salary study and bring everybody up to the right levels. I just want to put that on the record, because we're not in a business of taking stuff away from employees, we're trying to make it better.
All right. If I may chime in, I did bring this up at the last meeting, but it was just, you know, what I had saw through the inclement weather and the holidays and stuff, that to make sure that, you know, this Board is doing what we do and do it right. Yeah, I was here that day that you had two employees, I brought generators up here to run the, I mean, we had to dang this, so much drop cords you can believe, but we had to run payroll up here and whatnot. And I just personally want to make sure that we're doing what's right here, but if we've got a, if something's not right, we need to correct it, you know? Whether it be your department and I, there's nobody here going to argue that, you know, how many times I called you at 8 o'clock at night, "What are you doing up here?" Or come up here and, "Why are you still here? You know, you got work to do, and you go above and beyond."
I want to make sure we do what's right, and that's why I brought it up, that if there's something wrong here, let's look at it.
And really, on the on-call policy, you hear complaints about them not getting their fair amount. Well, on the on-call policy, if you go out for 30 minutes, you getting paid for two hours. But you don't hear anybody saying anything about that. And that's documented. It's documented. It's okay when you go out for 30 minutes and get paid for two hours. You don't say nothing. But now you want to bring up about a pay, and you got your actual worked hours and your holiday pay, and you were not cheated?
Chairman, that's why I don't understand where the, somebody accused somebody of cheating or wrongdoing. I hadn't gotten that call. I talked to you, we talked with Brandon and Tim the day it was all happening about the problems we're having in Haddock, not having any water, having to shut down to the city, having to turn valves on here, having water leaks. So, we were all talking about just making sure that the water was up and running, there was an email between us about what all damage was done because of the weather and all that. I had, I called you and made the conversation about, I hope we're going to show these employees that were out there in 15-degree weather, because it was a county-wide problem, that we appreciate them being away from their family.
Right.
And that was why you, we talked about it, and you brought it up at the meeting, and I don't know how we got to, it was an accusation that somebody wasn't paid correctly. I hope nobody's.
It must be me, because I'm getting a look.
Well, no, I just hope nobody's.
It was.
Okay, so, yeah, what I did say is I know how it feels to be that person that is sitting at work, working when everybody else is at home, getting paid, and we're both being paid the same amount during COVID, because that's what happened to me in my department. We got paid the same amount as everybody that was sitting at home, and it was not fair to us. I mean, because we worked for three and a half months, getting the same pay that people were sitting at home getting paid for. I said that.
I've been here every day for COVID. Exactly. And have not missed one day.
Is it fair to you? No, it's not.
It's not fair, but when I took on this responsibility as the Finance Director, I said I would do whatever it took, and I'm going to get the same pay as my 80 hours. I'm not getting no extra, and I didn't ask the Board for any extra, but I'm getting my same pay.
I just wanted to make sure that, no, your department hadn't done anything wrong. You paid right by the policy. I think that the issue we were talking about was, was there something we want to do above and beyond the policy for those employees? And I heard you when you said pick and choose. You know, I don't think we pick and choose departments or people, we pick and choose situations. And we've done this in the past when we had people step up for recreation, we've done it when we had people step up for Public Works, we've done it when we had people step up for the Water Department. We've done it three times since I've been here, and they were all legitimate, what we felt as a Board, legitimate reasons to step up.
So, if you don't step up, and you do still, if you do, if you don't step up and say anything to the Board, and you do what you was told to do or do what you know what's best to do for the county, then you don't get no incentive or whatever you want to do, if you don't step up, because there's a lot of departments that don't step up and don't say nothing and just do what they have to do for the constituents of this county.
Well, the three instances I'm talking about, nobody stepped up. We talked about helping give them something for stepping up over and above. I'm not talking about, I bet there's not a department head in this county that hadn't worked over 40 hours a week.
There's a lot of them.
I've been a department head for 31 years. I know. I work every week more than 40 hours, and my paycheck is the exact same every month. I work Saturdays and Sundays, I didn't take vacation for six years. I know the feeling, but that is part of salaried employees.
That is correct.
We're talking about those boots-on-the-ground guys that were out there on Christmas Day. I'm talking, and I have no idea who they were, what their names are, or if it was every department or just one department. I just know, we know that there was a situation on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day of a lot of problems across the county that affected the entire county as far as water, and that we had to have something. And I look at it as a lot bigger issue than getting called out on a cold Christmas night. Had it been a service call on Christmas that an employee done above and beyond what his scheduled hours was, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. What made me have the conversation with the Chairman was the emails and texts about how big of a problem we had and what was going on, that everybody was, not just everybody focused on Haddock, but I'm talking about everybody focused on every water line in the county. And I know, the very few rental properties I still have, I made sure that I put every one of them, wrapped the pipes and everything, still had three busted water lines. So, I know.
I know the feeling, because in Bucks County, we didn't have no water, and they did at Monroe County. Yeah, I know the feeling.
So, I didn't, I honestly didn't feel like, on my part, that we were picking and choosing, or I was picking and choosing, it was, I was looking at, this was a severe situation that, not that the individual stepped up and done above their job, it was a situation that warranted, we had a big enough problem that enough people had to be out away from their family to serve the entire community, that we needed to do something to show that we appreciate that as a Board, to all the employees, because I don't know who it was, if it would have been one. You talked about the two ladies that came up. I would have loved to have known that, we would have, I feel like I would have pushed to do something for them. Don't know who it was.
But you got a paycheck, so you should have known, because you got a paycheck. We had an ice storm, we had to have the generators. If we didn't have generators, you wouldn't have got a paycheck. So, then what would you have said, because all of the employees here would not have received a paycheck? So, that's critical to me.
Right.
That's critical, that you don't have no paycheck coming in, and it's an ice storm, and everybody else is at home, but you got a couple of people that's here. That's critical to me. It's the same thing.
Well, I'm going to tell you, Levita, you one of the only department heads, and I appreciate you, that don't squeak and barely gets the oil unless we dive in. So, I'm going to ask you to advocate in 2023 for your department, no different than in the meeting, we talked about adding an employee, no add two, because we know you go above and beyond to do the workload of probably 10 folks, because of the way y'all work. But the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and I'm going to ask you to be squeaky for 2023, if you don't do nothing else, or I'm going to sit in your office with you.
Yeah, I'm just a firm believer the right thing is the right thing, and I don't know who those employees were, but if there were two people when the whole county was off that got paychecks for the county, that were not salaried employees, had I.
They should have been paid.
Maybe I should have, maybe I should have known it, but I would have said something to Chairman just like this time, and said, "We need to do something for those two people." Gift card, extra paycheck, I don't know what, or, you know, what is the right thing to do, but my whole intent was acknowledge the folks that stepped up when we really needed it. I don't mean just going above and beyond and working an extra hour, extra day, but I mean, that's, that was, that is a good example. We've done that three or four times, three times that I know of since I've been on this Board, where it was a critical situation that somebody stepped up that is way out of it, which is why I propose, let's take it as a special situation when it happens. Don't happen that often, instead of trying to recreate a policy, because we're going to get into all kinds of issues with trying to recreate a policy based off federal IRS guidelines. There's no way around the fact that if you don't work 40 sweat hours, you can't start 41 hours at a time and a half. You got, if we give them two days, they got to work them two days on Saturday and Sunday. Yes, we can implement a holiday pay for Christmas and Christmas Day, but if it's on a Thursday and a Friday, and we give them that day off and enter holiday pay, it's not going to change anything. The only time it's going to change it is if Christmas is on Saturday and Sunday, and we give them off Friday and Monday, and then an emergency happens on Saturday and Sunday. That's the only time that situation's going to happen, and that's what happened here. So, it's very situational, but I'm just going to stand by, the right thing is the right thing, and I'm sorry that I didn't know that, because that's exactly right. That is a prime example of somebody stepping up when they show, "Yes, I got my check, but I didn't know my check wasn't given that night when it was a snow, it was an ice storm," or, you know, maybe the emails or texts should have went out saying, "Hey, without these two people, y'all..." without these two people, y'all ain't getting paid tomorrow. Maybe somebody'd stand up. But had I known that, I would have, I would have said the same thing I said to the chairman on this one. We've discussed it on the last two occasions before this about doing what's right. And it's not about changing policy, picking and choosing, or giving this one, or giving that one. Nobody complained to me about not getting a paycheck, not getting what they thought they owed, or even that they didn't like being out in that kind of weather. My whole conversation to the chairman to start it with, was we were in an email and text chain about how many issues we got going on. The only time I talked to Brandon was how much damage was done, how many pipes were broke, how much time did we spend trying to get Haddock system back on, and he was giving us constant updates of, we got it back on, but it's gonna take a while to fill it up. So publicly, we gotta tell people, you can't, you know, there was stuff all over social media about, don't stop running your pipes. Run your pipes. Oh, don't run your pipes, because we don't have the water. Well, shut your pipes off, so I don't have to fix your water leaks, or turn them on, so I have to fix your water leaks. It was insane. It was a, a true different situation than what we're used to. And that was the only reason I brought it up to the chairman, that I thought we needed to do something out of the ordinary, because this was way out of the ordinary.
Emerg- like an emergency pay fund.
And that's, like I said, I, I didn't get any, I was out there, I was out there working on my own property at the same time, and, you know, I, I saw, everywhere I looked, I saw water, you know? And I saw, you know, the water department here and there, and I go, oh my gosh. You know, I was getting calls, and I said, they'll get, get them when they can. That's all I can tell you, you know? Uh, so, and that's, that's where the conversation, I didn't get a, you know, talk with Brandon about, you know, just like, uh, Commissioner Kitchen said, about what all we had. I didn't get any, I didn't get any, I didn't get any, hey, I'm not getting paid right. It was about what this board needs to do, you know? And just like when your people came in, like I said, it, we, uh, it was chaos that day. Get power, a wheel came in, and I mean, we, we set you all up in the hallway and got the, I think, uh, I brought one generator, and then the county had one that we got going, and we had just enough to run the, so y'all can run payroll. And y'all had, they had to move everything in the hall to get it to work. So, uh, I forgot what it was. I can't remember if it was ice storm, or tri-county was down, or what it was.
Well, I don't think it's wrong that we want to do this. I think it was wrong that we didn't know, recognize that and do something about that. So that's, that's where I feel like we're wronged at. Those people that came in that day that were not salaried, salaried, you're right. That's a whole different story, because it's in your compensation package. You know it going into it. You sign that up for it when you take that job, that this is what you're gonna do. And, and I know Brandon and John, I've called them on the weekends about stuff, that, your clock don't cut off at five o'clock on Friday. You're right, Levita, you're probably the most, I, I, it would be amazing to see the number of hours that, that you, I'd be scared to, because I'd probably be mad, but I, I get that. But, but other than salaried employees, I, I think, again, I, I, I just want to do what's right, and I think that was a situation that, that constitutes doing something right, and I personally don't think it means changing the policy. I think if it's that big enough deal, then we handle it one-off. And, and that's the beauty of being elected. It's not a powerful thing, but it's, it's an opportunity to do what's right. And it takes three votes, that's the democracy. It takes three votes to think that what we're gonna do is right. And if three people say, no, I don't believe that's the right thing to do, then we don't do it.
Right.
But if majority thinks it's the right thing to do, that's what we do. I do, I will say this, I appreciate the fact. I, I don't like that there was maybe miscommunications, because I think Levita said that there was accusations to Commissioner, that this and that. I don't know how that came about. I didn't get it, and I didn't hear it, and I hate that is the feeling of any employee.
Right.
Um, but I, I do like the fact that we have employees trust us and are real enough with us that will get up and tell us, I think you did wrong here, I think you done wrong there, I think you may do wrong doing that. That's why we put leaders in positions. That's why we hire leaders for positions, not people that go, well, I'm not gonna say anything about it, and then go back to their office and be really mad and, and, and despise working here. That's the last thing I want to do, is have an employee that don't feel appreciated and don't value their job as much as we value them. Boom.
Levita, if you take offense to what I said, I'm truly sorry. I, it was not meant in whatever vicious intent it was, came across as. I just wanted, I think about, I was out there working on my dad's, my eighty-year-old dad's water lines that had six of them had busted out there, and how cold I was trying to get my dad's water up, and we had, I called Brandon. I asked him, how many employees have you got out on the grounds right now? I called John, how many did you have out? I did, because I knew those are the two departments that are gonna be out there in that weather. Those are the guys that are working for that little bit of a paycheck, not that salary paycheck. Those are the ones that I'm concerned about. I make, I've worked way more than forty hours a week at my job, because if this phone is with me, I'm at work. At twelve o'clock at night, when I got a coach that's coming in and can't get the, uh, alarm to go off on the bus, guess where they're calling? Right here. It's beside me all day long, okay? I understand those alarms. So I'm sorry if you took offense to that, because it was, we need something in place where this type, where these employees are out there in that kind of weather and environment, and away from their family, especially on Christmas. If you ain't got a compassionate heart about being away from a family at Christmas, you know, I, I look at all these parents that have kids that are in the service, and their kids are away for the first time, and it's, it's hard on them. It's the same way when you got a family and they're away on Christmas Day, because they got called out on something to help the community. I used to work rescue, and I rode the ambulance. I worked every Christmas for folks that they had children at home, because I didn't want them to have to not be at home with their kids. That's the ones I'm worried about.
And thanks, Shannon, for making me think about it twenty times, because you said, you, you've had to deal with that most of your life, and I, that bothers me. I can't fix it, but it has bothered me more than you know to, to know that, um, you have somebody in your family that, that misses every Christmas. That's, it's wrong, but it's part of a career that you choose, or it's part of a job that you choose. I, I hope, I hope that's the situation. But, um, you know, and I know there are parts of a job that come with that, meaning on-call, or you know what's expected when it's an emergency and all this. But, uh, there, there is a difference in an emergency call-out and a situation like we had on Christmas, I believe. I mean, I, y'all, y'all, y'all can believe differently and, and vote differently, but that, that's just the way I, I feel about it. But I, but I think it is so rare that we don't reinvent the wheel for it. We, we take it as a, as a, a one-off situation, if, and if there was a, a big enough deal that we need to, uh, do something outside of the norm, then we, then we vote to do it. And if we don't, we don't vote to do it. We tell them, thank you and for doing your job, and, uh, you know, but they were, I'll be real clear, they were compensated as far as, I, well, I know this, not even looking anything. I know this, because Levita's gonna do exactly what the law says to do. And I guarantee you, everybody that got a paycheck, their paycheck was right. So, end of story on that one. Uh, uh, any employee that thinks finance done something, uh, and, and they didn't get what they deserve, they might not get, they might think they don't get what they deserve, but it ain't because finance done anything wrong. It's because that's the policies we set in place, and that's what they're getting paid by. Now, if it's, again, if it's a special situation, we make special consequences, I mean, special, uh,
Considerations.
Considerations for it.
Anything, Commissioner Wood?
I think it's well been covered, and, you know, something maybe the Commissioner, us Commissioners need to think about is maybe have a spring appreciation meal for the employees, and possibly give them the rest of the day off with pay. That's, um, something different, you know?
Yep.
Bide it up. I know we have two in the fall, Christmas and Thanksgiving, maybe do something in the spring, start of the summer or something.
Well, I can, I can tell you firsthand, I, sometimes I don't come across right, or I might not come out right, and it's, you know, um, something I'm having to deal with now, but, uh, if I'm, if I ever do anything wrong, anybody in this room, if I make a mistake, I'm human like anybody else, let me know. Because I promise you, uh, you know, I'm, I, I got, I got, I, I got a lot of yes-dears in here right now that I'll tell you, right, I come a yes-dear, and I appreciate that, because, uh, I mean, if I'm doing something wrong, let me know. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we do, we do what's right. I, like I said, I, I, I two-saw firsthand, and, you know, more than one time, you know, going all the way back to, you know, Levita spoke about, you know, getting everybody's payroll checks out. That was, that was one of those, that's one of them times you just, nobody can prepare for. We got a generator now. We don't have to worry about it. But, like I said, uh, we, we had Drop Cord City going on out here to keep everything running. And, uh, but, uh, anyone else? You got anything you want to talk to for HR? Jason? What's y'all's thoughts? I mean, be, be truthful with us. I mean, I, I, that's what we're here for, a work session.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Uh, we can't vote on it, but Commissioner Martin, you got anything else to note?
Uh, I just hope that we're able to solve this, you know, with equity for the affected employees. We're gonna come up with something for emergency situations, let's do that. We're not changing policy. Then make it, make things legally inappropriate, um, so we can do what's right. Because at the end of the day, that's all I'm concerned about, to Sam's point. Not to be offensive, we have a big head about it, it takes three votes, and sometimes those three votes are hard to come by. But when it's for what's right, I think we all normally have consensus over that. It's okay.
Commissioner Ong, you got any comments, some Commissioner comments? No. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Are we gonna put it on the next agenda for, for a vote?
Vote.
My recommendation and, and, and my, um, motion is probably gonna be that we figure out whoever worked Christmas Eve and Christmas Day for that emergency situation, whatever department, whoever they are, for how long, and we, and we make a, um, some kind of compensation for that.
Except we legally, I mean, we do, do it properly.
Right, right. It's not change, it's just some kind of, whether it's a bonus, whether it's a, 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 whatever we call it, for those people that, that worked during that time, that we're considering an emergency situation on a holiday. And if it's maintenance, public works, water department, finance, wha- whatever, whoever it is that, that worked on that time, I, I think the right thing to do is, is, is show them that that was an abnormal situation, that we want to show our appreciation.
I agree.
Anything else? Any department head want to speak?
I understand the policy, can't change policy. I don't know anything about taxes. I have no idea, IRS, all that kind of stuff. Um, I know I came to Jason directly after payroll be called. The Thursday was counted as a holiday. You know, you only got two and a half hours, something like that, so. And again, I don't know the solution at all. I'm a hundred percent on board with whatever y'all decide. If, if y'all are asking my opinion, um, the guys that worked Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, because you had to make up sixteen hours, like fourteen and a half hours to get your physical working forty, those guys, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, were working for straight time. That doesn't sit right with me. Uh, that's, that's my only opinion on this. Um, obviously, there isn't a policy that you can change in IR, and I don't understand that stuff, but anything y'all can do, they will feel more appreciated, because I did get the comment, don't call me next year. Don't call, you know, but I didn't have to answer the phone, but I have five of them out there. Five to eight people that work outside the office, on, on-site working. Um, that's, that's my only thing. I'm glad whatever y'all do here, but if there's anything we can do to, and again, obviously there isn't, but.
How many on-call guys did you have, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day? Are all your guys on-call all the time, or do you have?
I don't have one on-call all the time.
So I know we had all hands on deck, because we were talking about how many crews you had in different places. So all your guys worked, but only one was on-call.
Right.
That's, that would be my fear, if we've got one person on-call, legally, we only, we only have one person that we're, uh, can hold accountable for not showing up. In all fairness, that's the only person that can't drink and can't go off somewhere because they're on-call. It's very easy. I had this happen during a storm before. It's very easy for the guys that didn't want to work the storm. I can't come in, boss. I've already started drinking. And there's nothing we can do about it. And that's, it, it, I just, I just think, um, we had people that weren't on-call that stepped up. We've had it, um, we've had it before, uh, in situations, and we made it right. Had this happened on any other time besides a weekend, between two holiday days, um, their hours would have been different. Their paid hours would have been different. But this, the IRS bumped into our holiday policy and the situation the way it happened and the day it fell out. So this is such a rare situation. I think it just calls for doing the right thing, and there's never a wrong time to do the right thing.
Again, that's my only thing. I don't, I don't, if y'all are asking my opinion, I don't feel like this right. For my guy, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, he makes it very well, away from their family when they didn't have to show up. And they don't have to show up next year, but I need them to if this were us.
So what do you suggest? Do you want us to break the law? I mean, what do you want?
No, no, no.
I don't know the law, so I don't vote. I know any other municipality.
I know I'm not a department head, but may I read something from our handbook?
Sure.
Our handbook on page twenty-two, Article Six, Section Two, Holiday Weekend Annual Leave Cancelled When Broke Water. Upon notice duly given, any and all employees may be required to be available for unscheduled work time. Such notice may be given only after determination is made by the board due to an emergency or unusual condition, it is necessary that work be performed during the period of question. That's, that's y'all. And I know I'm not a department head. I'm your payroll person. And, you know, the things that have been going on, when they go on. I'm, I have been like a duck, and it rolls off my back, but sometimes there are things that really get under my skin, and this is one of those. I'm not. It's not you, Brandon. It's not you, John. It's not Levita. It's not Mr. Jason. It's just sometimes it's a combination. You know, I go by the law. I'm not going to jail for anybody. I'm sorry. But when I, when the law says you have to work forty hours to get time and a half for a, a non-exempt employee, for an hourly employee, I'm gonna go by that law. We all agree on that.
I, I agree on that, and, and I, I'm trying not-
The perfect storm happened on Christmas with weather and a weekend, and the, we had given our employees the two days of a holiday to thank them for all of their hard work, but eight people didn't get to enjoy that, because they made sure that Jones County had water. And they need to be patted on the back and compensated a little bit and thanked for that being above and beyond.
And five.
Five. Well, public works, did you have any, did you have any out?
And building maintenance.
I do.
Um, but, you know, there have been times in the past when the hurricanes came through.
And public works has to go get out.
They had to live by the same rules that work all the way- They had to live by the same rules that work all over right now. Mr. Jones' crew didn't get any compensation.
But it probably didn't fall on a Christmas holiday weekend where we already had two holidays of Monday and a.
I think one time it was Labor Day, wasn't it? I think Labor Day or maybe it was Columbus Day.
It was before my time as chairman, I mean, as a commissioner.
I've been around president much, but.
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, because a tree fell down, the reason I know a tree fell down, a stain, and I hit the tree and I, I didn't know what to do. I was leaving here. I called Don Grant and he called John. So, yeah, so situations do happen.
And, and I agree, situations happen. My thing is if, if you're gonna do it for this time, what about next time? What if you're not on the board? And, you know, and then the other employees come in and say, well, they did it last time.
So, Chairman, I got, I'm, I gotta make comments. I can appreciate questioning us and, and holding us to policy. I agree with what you said there. It's in the handbook that says, if you're hourly and you're called in and there's an emergency, you may be called in to do extra work. This board voted on that policy. This board can also vote to give a man $5,000 for going above and beyond if they choose to. I don't think anybody came up here and asked if we wanted them to break the law. That's not what Brandon said when he was up here. I didn't hear that. I don't understand what the problem is. Are we gonna do it next time? Maybe. I may bring it up next time and I may make that recommendation. If I don't get two more votes, we're not gonna do it. And as far as another board, I hope to God that the next board that sits in this desk up here, if they don't do what I'm recommending, shame on them. I'll tell you that right now. Shame on them. And I hope that every employee lets them know it, but I don't want any employee not coming to work because they think we screwed them over. I don't want any employee not thinking that we don't appreciate them because the only reason we're having this conversation, in my mind and for me, is to do something for the people that went above and beyond when they didn't have to. And that's, one of them had to, the rest of them didn't have to. And I don't know their names or who they are, but they didn't have to and they did. And it was a bad situation and I think the right thing to do is show them we appreciate it in a monetary amount. I don't know how we do that. It's not about breaking the law, it's not about skirting the law, it's not about any of it. But it's, it's about doing the right thing and.
Do you want this to come out of their work paycheck or do you want this to be?
How do we need that?
Out of their what? Out of their regular paycheck?
If it goes through their paycheck, it is taxed, correct? If it comes out of accounts payable, it's not taxed.
Which, which way would be?
How, how did we do it last time? At AP last time.
You didn't tax it?
The payroll.
And it was taxed?
No, I didn't pay the taxes. I belonged there. I had to pay the social security, your parking, the Medicare, but if you had, you know, exemptions or something. I gave you your flat amount, if you said 200, I gave you a flat 200. If you said 100, I gave you whatever, I gave you the flat amount.
And then paid back, paid whatever else it was on the backside. They got the amount that they were supposed to get. I get it.
If that's what you did last time, I think that's the way to do it.
Anyone else? John, you got anything? I do appreciate y'all. I really do. I appreciate y'all, you know, you know, telling us your thoughts. We want, we need to hear this, you know? And as hard as it is to sit in this chair and do the right thing, I mean, it's not fun sometimes, but I want to do what's right and what's legal. That's two things we want to do. And if you've got shortages in your department, Commissioner Martin said, Levita, you need one, get two. Because, you know, it's, I see you up here a lot today, that you don't have to be here. Anything else to note?
I appreciate them. I appreciate the fact that they keep us on our toes and that they make us justify what we're doing.
Commissioner Martin, I hadn't forgot about you. Comment? I did forget about you, but I didn't. I'm used to seeing you sitting to my right and not talking over the phone.
Yeah, I know, it's tough. I appreciate y'all though. I'm on great highway, but y'all be candid by the time I get there.
All right, any comment?
I, I want, you know, again, this to be that, that opportunity where we do, do what's right about employees, look at how we can address this because we know the trifecta of events may happen in the future. But also, how do we make sure that all departments, including finance and public works, get the oil they need when they need it, even if a director or an employee doesn't advocate? Because we know that some of these things, these one-offs happen. And whether it's by happenstance or we're delivering a meal or a generator to the government and we find out, we need to figure it out. And I think the onus is also on employees and directors to try and help us make it a better place. We're not there to turn the place upside down, but to make it better. I pride myself on being a part of a group that I think has worked hard to do that over the past few years. And we've made more progress in the past few years than we've had at any other time. And I think our employees are getting rewarded at a better level. And there's still some things we have to do to make the county a better place. And at the end of the day, let us all gear on that as opposed to anything else that divides us, brings us together. Thank you.
All right, anything else? You ready?
I'm ready. I got another board meeting to go do.
You will get, you will.
I adjourned this work session.
Say a second, old favor, huh?
She didn't even motion, she just adjourned.